Please call the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lark.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 21st, 2023. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $263,130.47 and payroll expenses of $179,840.12. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. I don't believe we have a planning commission report. Mr. Bowman, do you have a hospital authority meeting?
I might have a little bit here. It's pretty routine. The hospital is working to, actually, I think it's already been approved. A new doctor is starting. He'll be here once a month. There's another orthopedic surgeon that had an interview about three weeks ago. I don't know how that went. The supply chain review is going well. There was no grievances for the month of January. We approved the medical marijuana use by patient policy and the grievance opportunities for improvement policy. And that was about it.
Counsel, have any questions? Thank you, sir. Next item is the Alva Public Library Board Meeting. Mr. Dowling.
The library had its meeting for the libraries on February 28th. It will have another one to host the Imagination Library Workshop on March 20th. They managed to file the E-Rate program for the funding. That's the program that pays for the library's internet. We have also been able to purchase a laptop and two monitors and I think, oh, sorry, a large television and two computers for some meeting rooms for the Share Medical Center meeting room that they have, is that what it's called? Share Trust. Share Trust, yes, our Share Trust Meeting Center. And I think that kind of wraps it up in a nutshell. I guess, are there any questions?
Counsel, have any questions? Thank you, Taylor. Next item is the Alva Arena Authority. There's no report from them. Tourism Tax Commission Meeting. Mrs. Beer.
We haven't had a regular meeting since the last, but we did have a special meeting, and that was to approve the Alva PD's barbecue fundraiser. And that was approved, and it has started being advertised on Facebook and, I believe, the paper.
May the fist, right?
Maybe, yes.
Force the fist out. It's a couple day event, yep.
Yes, they're making it bigger. They've actually titled it Pro because if it's titled a certain way, pro barbecuers can't enter in smaller tournaments, so they had to name it accordingly to make it bigger. So they seem very excited about this year.
Any questions for Mrs. Beer?
Do you know, are they still going to do the try one where you buy a ticket and then you vote on it based off the handout?
He did not get into that detail, but you could ask Orkut. But I do know that they plan on having other smaller activities going on at the same time, but I don't know about the tickets.
Okay, let's, I enjoyed it last year.
I think there'll be, I do think there'll still be a people's choice category.
See, I would think they would, but he didn't get into those specifics.
All right. Next item is the Alva Board of Adjustments Meeting. There hasn't been a Board of Adjustments meeting. And then the Regional Airport Commission Meeting. The airport board met, and it was primarily routine business and reports. We did have one discussion regarding the lease that the Department of Transportation has at the northeast corner of airport property. And so that was a 50-year lease or something with a dollar for the amount paid. And so the board has asked management to put together a more modernized lease with a more appropriate lease rate. So we'll be taking that back to the board for their consideration and then working with ODOT on that. Any questions? Next item is the Recreation Complex Board Meeting. Mrs. Swallow.
We had that on March 8th. We appointed Shane Hansen as the new chair to replace Dr. Smith, so therefore we're looking for a new board member. We discussed some fee schedule changes, especially for baseball weeks, that we'll probably continue discussing for a while yet. Discussed possible items to put on the budget and things that need updates and repairs so that she could get ready for the budget. And Courtney's still searching for an assistant.
Does the counsel have any questions for Gail? Thank you. Next item is the cemetery meeting. Lenny, would you like to give us a report?
Good evening. The cemetery board met a couple of weeks ago. We meet four times a year, every three months, so we don't really meet again until June. We own land in Apache County, and maybe Mayor Parker can explain.
Apache or Alfalfa?
Oh, Apache, excuse me. Arizona. Alfalfa County. And there's some concern about the quality of the soil. And I always thought you used lime to get rid of bodies, but apparently a lot of farmers put lime into the soil to increase the productivity of the soil. And Mr. Heda, who was renting the land, would like us to do that. I don't know where in the process it's developing, but he'd like $16,000 for us to pay for putting the lime into the soil. Using, only I can relate it to is the satellite ad from years ago where the farmer's in his tractor and he's got a screen and it says, quit putting this stuff on and start putting this stuff on. I've only ridden a horse once in my life, so I'm not a farmer. So this is like all Greek to me. The good news is we are the second cemetery in Oklahoma to begin the process to approve green burial. And you are all giving me that look like you don't have that much of a clue. We are going to designate Block 22, which is the furthest northwest corner on the west side of the cemetery. If you go green, you don't have to have a vault, you don't have to have a coffin, they don't have to embalm you if you're buried within 12 to 24 hours. And we had citizens that have asked to be buried within that short period of the time so they would not be embalmed. It is to allow the body to decompose and go back into nature. You will be able to put a headstone or whatever you want there. In some cemeteries, they'll put a marker that you can use, I guess, a satellite to walk up to your space so you don't actually have to have a stone, but you would still be registered that way. Mr. Chafee is very interested in this topic and is pushing it, so we will probably have a special meeting in April. He is getting copies of policies from Stillwater. And in 10 years, they've only had 25 people request that service. But both Mr. Chafee and myself have received at least one or two citizens who would be interested in going down that road. It's just to offer another opportunity to the community. And that's as far as we've gotten on that. And since I'm up here, if you have nothing else to do, on March 28th at 6 o'clock at the VOTAC, the candidates running for city council, city marshal will be there to address the public, and it's being hosted by the county Democrats. So it's nonpartisan. Come and help make a crowd. We had over 60 at the meritorial for it. Unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Lenny. I'll just, we won't bludgeon you or anything, but next time, just save that for the public comment section, and that way we won't have to have my legal counsel get on me. I might expand on that.
Sorry.
That's all right, thank you. Counsel, have any questions for Lenny or other comments?
Well, I might expand. I was there talking about the deal, about the farm ground. There would be a guy that come and actually do like a grid survey for like testing the soil. It's where the pH is really low and it does affect the growing of it and it's discorrect. And once they get that survey in, they can determine where it may need more and less, then use GPS to properly apply the lime to bring it all up into proper balance and everything. So that's what that was. So I was just, I was there, and he had had, Mr. Heda had tested Burlington, but they will go out and do so many samples where there is a guy that will go out and like do a sample like every five acres. And it's more of a cost-saving type deal to where they just don't go out there and just throw the same amount over the whole deal. So that's what that was.
How can we have land in Alfalfa County that donated to?
Have they set up the survey?
No, they were gonna, they wanted to do a little more research on it to educate themselves a little more on it.
I don't have any farmers on my board, so. All of them. When we were explaining it to them, they all looked at us like we were talking Greek.
Understandable.
I think the main thing as that board proceeds is to just make sure and adhere to the terms of the lease agreement. Any other questions or remarks regarding the cemetery meeting? Thank you. Thank you, Lenny. Next item is the Finance Committee Meeting. Mr. Winters.
So to go over some of our financial report, total cash balance for the city, this is as of February, was about 3.3 million. That's up about $150,000 from last month, so we're continuing our trend up in our cash balance. We, if you remember right, last month we made some adjustments, adjusting entries to take out some financing we ultimately ended up not going through with. So some of these numbers are going to change a little bit. But overall, the city of Alva has collected 66.33% of budgeted revenue. That's basically right on target of where we would want to be. And we've expended 64.12% of budgeted expenses. The significant change primarily was in the Alva Utility Authority because it's where a lot of those revenues and expenses existed. So we actually have collected 70.46% of anticipated revenues for the fiscal year, which is up from 55% last month. And then expended 62.85%, which is also up from 49% last month. So that's where the majority of that change was, and so that's why those numbers changed so drastically. For the month of February, we collected a total of $428,738.29 in sales and use tax, which is up 13.2% from February of 2022 and up 2.96% from January of 2023. The rest of the time we spent was primarily with, I'm going to get this wrong, but HSPG, I believe, which is our auditing firm going through the audit with us. And we'll have a presentation here shortly for all of that, so.
Any questions from the council? Thank you. Mayor's report, I've got a few things that I wanted to mention. We did, so we had applied for a lighting grant back in the fall and were not awarded that grant at that time. I can't remember which state entity it is, but anyway, they caught up with our grant writer last week to let her know that we were getting consideration for our application at that time and that we've been awarded about $30,000, a little over $30,000 for LED lighting conversions. The original thought last week when we got that information was we would do professional building and the library. After visiting with the library director, we're going to put off the library and have City Hall be the other component of that. So professional building in City Hall for the lighting grant. Once that lighting grant's complete, then we'll be eligible for rebates with OG&E on our electric bill. Electric bill. The, let's see. We did have our department budget meetings last week, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We did eight or 10 hours a day, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and met with every department head that had a portion of our budget. Mr. Ford was able to come up and be part of those meetings, as was Mr. Osip as a consultant. It was pretty productive. We have a lot of pieces to our budget put together, but obviously, it's those initial requests. So the initial requests are higher than what we anticipate for having for revenue, so we're going to have to pare those down and get moving that way. But as a reminder, we do have our council and department head budget retreat this Saturday at the VOTAC, and we'll go from 8 to 3. We'll provide lunch. The mainline replacement project, which we received the million-dollar ARPA grant, we are going to be advertising for bids on this coming Friday and next Friday. So we plan on opening bids on April 14th, and then for our April 17th meeting, we plan to have bids for approval for city council. You might have noticed that the sidewalk over at Co-op has been tore up. We're going to be replacing, it's been in disrepair for quite some time. And we're going to be replacing that sidewalk that provides the access to the professional building. So we did have, probably not great news, definitely not great news, but the DEQ, US DEQ is doing a lead and copper line abatement mandate. So this is going to be very significant for the city of Alva. I need to, I got an email late this afternoon from our representative with DEQ out of the Woodward office, and I intend to forward on to all the council members so that they've got some contact information. But essentially, they're going to want all lead and copper lines or galvanized lines that are downstream from lead and copper to be replaced. Our first obligation is to prepare a report for the DEQ, and we have until October 2024 to prepare that report. But essentially, that report has to include the location of any lead and copper or galvanized downstream to send to them. And then I'm sure that they're going to use that to tell us what our mandate actually is going to be. My knowledge, there are no funds associated with this DEQ mandate, and so I, pardon my language, intend to fight like hell. It's going to be a very significant undertaking in a community that does not have unsafe levels of lead in our water. If we had, if we were from Michigan, that'd be one thing, but we're not. And our water is safe, and so I do not like this mandate, and I don't know, we're probably going to have to, each of us take a role in helping to speak up for our community. I will point out a few things coming up tomorrow. I'm going to steal your thunder, Joe. Changemakers is doing a pool court dinner in memory of former Parks and Rec Board Chairman Troy Smith, and the purpose of that is to raise money for the swimming pool. So thank you. I know, I apologize, I have an obligation. I'll try to get there as soon as that's over with, but thank you guys for doing that. That will be at the 818 Diner from 5 to 7?
5 to 7:30.
5 to 7:30. On Thursday this week, the Chamber of Commerce will have their annual gala, and want to point out that the Recreation Complex is up for one of their awards. We also have, I think it's a part-time law enforcement officer is up for one of them. I should have looked at that more closely before I came in. But that will be this Thursday evening out at, I think it's Four Generations is the name of the business, out on 281 South. Same place it's been the last couple of years. Also going on Thursday evening, we'll be sending our grant specialist, Stephanie, Dr. Stephanie Wydic, to the Oklahoma History Center. The annual awards and banquet for the Oklahoma Historical Society is Thursday, and we will be, Stephanie will be accepting on our behalf the certification of the Alva Swimming Pool as a historic site. So that's pretty cool. April 19th through the 21st will be the Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunt here in Alva. And so there'll be lots of folks in from out of town regarding that. And the last thing I want to do, I want to pass out an email that I received this morning. Mr. Dowling, you had made mention at the forum at Cancun the other evening that you've been in conversation with the managing partners for Crawford and Associates, and they had some concerns about our finances. I, you know, obviously, if there are concerns about our finances, we want to address those. I did reach out to Mr. Crawford to find out what his concerns were and what the nature was of that conversation to make sure that it wasn't something that city council needed to be addressing. And as you can see from this email, Mr. Crawford does not recall having a conversation with you, nor does any of his staff. But he did go through and look back through our finances to see if there were concerns that he might have, and his remarks were generally very favorable regarding our financial improvement over the last year or two. So you can kind of see some of those numbers in there. I do appreciate that Crawford has been a very important partner with us over the last year, particularly since we, when we lost Angelica and her background in finance. They've really helped ensure that we continue to meet our financial obligations by way of just making sure our reporting was accurate and that we had good information when we come into council meetings to make decisions. I don't want folks to be alarmed by our financial status because our financial status is improving, and we need to make sure that we continue to do what it takes to see our finances, our financial health continue to improve. And that concludes my report. Any questions? All right. Just to clarify, I attended a class that they sponsored where they talked about different issues within municipal audit and were to verify and what you should look for and how to interpret it. Sponsored by OML, that one, Municipality Conference. Any other questions or feedback? We'll move on to the next item. There's no business manager. Steve will be here full-time starting on April 10th. He'll also be here Saturday for the budget retreat. All right. Item seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per speaker. If the speaker would please identify him or herself when they seek to make comment. Thank you. Glad you're all here. Andy, I'm going to put you off for one more item. I'm going to move around. I know Ethan needs to get out of here, so he's been patient so far. I'm going to move item number 12 to now. We'll discuss item number 12. Discussion and action to adopt the Woods County Multi-Jurisdictional, Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022. Ethan, do you care to give us a high level?
I'm just trying to give you a quick rundown on it. The plan's been sent, and I think Kelly's distributed it out to you guys. But basically, as a whole, Woods County has put together a planning team that's incorporated all of different members from different towns and cities, departments, fire departments, law enforcement, schools. And we've worked to update the hazard mitigation plan for the county. It's a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, which means that it includes all of the cities and towns and schools to incorporate them into a single plan. Basically, in the hazard mitigation plan, it goes in and you identify hazards and stuff and so forth, natural hazards that affect communities in an area in Woods County and all, information that's specific to each locality. And then go through and assess how those impacts can be reduced or mitigated by different strategies or, you know, purpose of equipment and so forth. It's a five-year plan. Once it's adopted, right now, the plan is approved pending, it's FEMA-approved pending formal adoption by all the local jurisdictions. So by adopting the plan, it would allow the city of Alva to then go forth and apply for hazard mitigation grant funding down the road. And there's several different grant programs. Some of them are hazard mitigation grant program, post-fire projects, so some of those, if there's, it's called an FMAG, it's a fire management assistant grant. If there's a large fire that comes through and eligible to receive federal funding on that. There's also additional funding that can come after that in addition to supplying funds for reimbursement to those departments that respond. But it can go in to help mitigate for further down the road for wildfires and stuff. There's also, there's standard hazard mitigation grant programs. There's the brick grant, which is the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, and flood mitigation system grants as well, too. And some of those projects that can come out of it, there's programs that you can do, individual safe room programs. So basically, that'll be like a countywide sponsored deal if approved in that grant. And basically, primary residents can apply to install a storm shelter at their primary residence, following being approved on that. And then, once they install those safe rooms, then they can receive, I believe it's like a $1,500 or $2,000 rebate back on that. So it's just kind of incentive for people to install stuff, safe rooms at their residence. It also allows for being able to apply for public storm shelters or community shelters. And some of the flood mitigation grants, it'll allow you to apply for flood and storm water drainage projects. I know that kind of affects here at times. Also, you know, acquisition installation of like backup generators on critical infrastructure, so water wells, lift stations, water treatment plants, communication sites, and other buildings and that. There's also, allows for some funding sources for adoption and enforcement of updated building codes. So it's basically when the programs, the grants go out every year and the notice of funding on it, there are certain line items that they're looking to hit through those grant programs that they're trying to emphasize. That's kind of the rundown on it. The county's gone ahead and adopted the plan already. It's been a long time. I mean, we started working on this almost five years ago. It's been a long time. I mean, we started working on this almost five years ago. We applied for a grant to write it and contracted out through No Doubt. And we've had a lot of bumps in the road and finally here. So basically, now it's just all the cities and towns and schools have to agree to formally adopt the plan by resolution. And then, once all that's submitted back to FEMA, they will send us a final approval letter. And then, five years from that date, that plan will be effective. And then it'll allow us to apply for those different projects as they become available. That's, I know kind of a little long, but that's kind of the quick nutshell of it. Does anybody got any questions on it?
Thank you, Ethan. I appreciate you coming to share that. And I appreciate all the work that went into preparing the plan itself. I know it-
You're a part.
I know. I'm not as big a part as you. So it's a very comprehensive plan as a jurisdiction within Woods County. I mean, that's why we're participating in this, and that's why we got the resolution here for consideration this evening. County approved it, what?
Last month.
Last month. Anyway, any questions for Ethan? Thank you, sir. I apologize, it's- And Drew, I believe we're still able to take action, even though I didn't put the resolution number on the agenda item. But do we state the resolution number when someone makes a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so that resolution number is the attachment, Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution, Resolution 2023-9.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-9.
Second? I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Dr. Larr to approve Resolution 2023-9, the Woods County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Omen?
Yes.
Thank you all. Now, we'll move back up to number eight. Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Annual Audit by Andy Cromer of HSPG and Associates PC.
Good evening, all. My name is Andy Cromer. I'm a CPA with HSPG. We're out of Oklahoma City. For you all that maybe were in a similar seat last year, I'm a new face. Your prior auditor, Chris Angel, was with Angel Johnson Blasting Game. He retired last summer, I guess. He calls us and says he's retiring. Are we interested in doing your work? And Dr. Kellin said, we said, sure. So the point being, this is our first year. None involved prior to that. Chris is enjoying his retirement, I understand. So that's who we are. You all have may have also come into contact or seen invoices or seen Crawford and Associates or that name float across your desk. So they are a separate CPA firm. They help the city with, really, a big thing is to get ready for the audit. And then they actually will write the report that you all have. They give it to us as well as the city, and then we all review it. And then, I think, just any questions throughout the year, they're available and for consultation. And then they've even gotten more involved, I think, since this. So we're auditing June 30th of '22. And so that's, what, nine months ago? So you're three months away from completing the next year. So keep in mind that this is, you know, a ways back. But it is what it is. And so really, just to delve in, you should have three documents. And the big one is just, yours is about one, but the big one's just the financial statements. And then, you should have two others, and if you don't, that's fine. I can just talk you through them. But we are required to give you a letter. I just call it the Required Communication Letter. It's a letter from us to the governing body that covers seven or eight bullet points. And so when I get to that, I'll mention that. And then a third document is, I just call it a management letter. So if we have any kind of points or things maybe you could look at and improve upon, it would be in there. So we've got one of those as well. So, but just the first thing, and I'm going to take a real high-level view of this, but please stop me if you want to get into anything. But I don't want to wear you all out by getting, you know, too much into this. But please stop me if you need to. So these reports, I mean, it's fairly thick, and it just covers one year. And I started on the Finance Committee. If you wanted, it's hard to put this into context without something to compare it to, namely, how we do last year, you know, the prior year. And so to make this two years' worth of data, the thing gets twice as thick. And if one year didn't worry you out, two years certainly would. So it's generally limited to one year. There is a part at the front called Management's Discussion Analysis that does take a high-level view and compares things between the two years. Sometimes you can glean some things out of that, sometimes you can't. So anyway, just know that that's there. But I've just taken a few big-picture metrics, if you will, and compared how we do in '22 to how to '21. So I guess really the first thing is, you know, and I have been made fully aware of the prior year and some of the, you know, the budget issues and the spending that occurred in prior years, and you all are trying to, you know, dig yourselves out of that. So I got the background of all that. But just some big-picture things, your total cash balance, cash investments, so cash CDs, you know, all of that just lumped together regardless of what fund. At the end of '21, your cash investments was 3.8 million. At the end of '22, it's 4.4 million. So about a $550,000 increase just in your cash balance. Your fund balance, again, regardless of what fund or if it's restricted for some purpose or not, just total fund balance, which is, you know, assets less your liabilities. That went from 1.2 million to 5.0, no, I'm sorry, from 4.5 million to 5.6 million. So about a million-two increase. Your debt has declined. You didn't take on any new debt. In the debt you have, you've paid off about $480,000 worth. And then there was a large due to the general fund owed money to the airport. And so not all of that's been paid back, but about $800,000, almost $900,000 got paid back to the airport in 2022 from the general fund to the airport. Now, keep in mind that during '22, you have, my notes, about $430,000 in CARESAC money. So it's not a recurring revenue stream. And now you probably have received another approximately $430,000 this year. And then in '21, you received $380,000 or so of CARESAC, so all this COVID money. So you've got three years of large COVID checks, but it's not recurring. And so, you know, that's probably it. So it's not something you can count on. So know that, yes, it's helped, but it's also not a recurring revenue stream. So really, all those metrics are positive. Now, your general fund still shows a negative fund balance of about $307,000, $375,000. So at the end of last year, it was $870,000. Now it's $370,000. So still negative, but it's a smaller negative than it was. That's really it on the financials, as far as we have an opinion in here. And it's a clean opinion, so it's not modified for anything. It's not, everything is materially correct except for this or except for that. So clean opinion. So the other report, and then I'll let you all, if you have any questions, speak out here. But the other report that's in here is at the very back. It's a two-page report, which the state of Oklahoma requires all municipalities to have. But it's a report that talks about your internal control and your compliance. So when we do an audit, we do not audit your internal control. So we look at it, we understand it, but we don't audit it. So to audit it would mean, we look at, we'd say, what do you do? You do this. We would go test that control throughout the year. And we would test a whole bunch of controls throughout the year. So we don't do that. We just get an understanding to help us plan our audit. So, but with that said, if we do see something in your internal controls that could be significantly improved or it's a problem, that would be in here. And there's not a comment in here about that. So there's no comments there. We do have another comment that I'll get to in a second. And then the other piece of this report deals with compliance. And you might say, compliance with what? Well, it's generally compliance with state law, compliance with federal law. It could even be, to some degree, compliance with your own internal law, if you will. So anything that could have a direct and material effect on your financial statements from a compliance standpoint. And if we see a problem with that, that would go in here. So we do have one comment on compliance, and it deals with that negative fund balance that I just mentioned. And I think you've had this comment before. But the state says your general fund cannot have a negative fund balance. In fact, none of those governmental funds, your utility authority is not governed by the state. The state doesn't address whether that can or not. But your other funds cannot have a negative fund balance. And so that comment's in here, and then the city's response is also in there. So that was a very, very fast overview of this, what, 60-some-page report, I think. Before I move on, I don't know if you all have gotten a chance to look at it, but any questions or comments, thoughts before I go on?
I do have two comments that I want to bring up, just for clarity. Because again, he's talking about June of 2022. So I didn't mention this in my finance report. Our total cash and asset balance currently is 5.6 million, so it's continuing to trend upwards. And then our general fund deficit that he's referring to, as we reported a couple of months ago, is no longer negative general fund balance. And it's actually sitting at about $104,000. So just to put that into perspective, that the issue that he mentions there has already been corrected and should not be on our next audit.
Just out of curiosity, could you kind of go into the detail of like the fund balance compared to like the unassigned fund balance or the unassigned deficit?
Sure. And in fact, that's where I was leading, but let's just stop and talk about that for a second. So your fund balance, just before we start slicing and dicing, is simply assets less liabilities. So if you have more liabilities than assets, then you have a negative fund balance. It's not where you want to be. But then within fund balance, you can actually have categories of fund balance. And it's based on, are any of those, is that fund balance, quote, restricted for a purpose? And there's several levels of restriction. There's one level that's actually called restricted, which means it's been restricted to how funds can be spent. Generally, the easiest way to think of it is by an outside party. So it could be the government, you know, with the grant. It could be debt issues or contract, whatever, some legal thing that says, here's how you spend the money. And the thought being, that's the hardest for you all to change. I mean, in fact, you really can't. The other party would have to agree to have that changed. And then you can have committed, which is internally designated for a specific purpose. So this body here could vote to say, we want to set aside some money for a specific purpose. That would be carved out of fund balance. Now, it's a lesser, quote, restriction, because then you all could also turn around and vote to unrestricted, right? You can't unrestrict what a government grant, the government grant is what it is. And then you would have unrestricted, would be, you know, that last bucket. So in y'all's case, you have, and I'm going from memory here, so give me a second. But I think you have restricted, at least in the general fund, when you appear. You have restricted money at 470, so again, that's external restrictions, which kind of is what it is. And then there's committed. That committed deals with your stabilization policy. And that's about almost $800,000. And then that's, so we've got a total net deficit, you know, total net deficit fund balance. And so when you start carving out pieces, you start carving out positive, restricted, positive, committed. That gives you a much bigger unrestricted deficit because you've still got to come back to this set number, right? So does that make sense? And so the bigger that committed gets, the bigger this unrestricted deficit gets as well. I mean, that's just the math. It's almost like a plug at that point. So does that, I don't know, I kind of maybe wandered off a little bit, but did that address?
But the idea is that we would have to pay back that unassigned deficit eventually because that's funds that was taken from something that was outside of restricted or a restriction we put on ourselves that we have not lived in.
Yeah, this is where it's an internal designation is, you know, how much weight do you put on that? And so maybe this is a good point to get into this other one-page letter because they go hand in hand. So let's just deal with that, too. But this one-page letter where we've got two comments, just for you all to think about. You know, this letter that I'm talking about doesn't go to the state. It doesn't go anywhere but to you guys. But one, there's two comments on there. Let's just deal with both of them. The first one is talking about that towards the end of '22, the business manager left and went to the hospital. That business manager is also serving in the dual role as finance director. And so when you lost one person, you're really losing two positions. That, my understanding in the past, have actually been two different people, not just one person. So you really have gone from two people to no people. And so the Crawfords have stepped in and I think helped to alleviate some of that burden. But you're also just down two bodies. And as far as internal controls, that can lead you to having people doing things that you prefer. Maybe they didn't. So there are certain duties that you just inherently don't want one person doing multiple things. You're losing some checks and balances that way, if you think about that. So we don't have a silver bullet to that problem except to let you all know, to know of it, and be careful, and try to figure out, and do whatever you can. Okay? I mean, it's just an inherent problem that you faced. So again, that's started towards the end of this fiscal year that we've audited. Then the second comment, which is to your point, the stabilization policy, and I've got a copy here somewhere, but it's a little, I guess, confusing into what the intent was, and probably even more so when you've got a deficit in total to begin with. And so how do you kind of, how do you set up a stabilization reserve when you're negative to begin with? You know, that reserve is to carve out some of your positive fund balance instead of deciding. And so we don't have anything to pull from to begin with. And so the whole thing is just a bit odd or confusing, the way it's worded and the way it's being implemented. And so our comment to you all is just be aware of that, look at it, see if there's some changes you need to make, either to the policy itself, or maybe the policy is fine, it's what you want. It's the implementation of it needs to be reworked a bit, or some combination of the two. So I know we talked about this a good little bit in the Finance Committee, so I don't know, Mayor, if you-
I mean, yeah, and some of this, well, it wasn't brand-new information. It was, it's the first time it's been really reported to us this way in our audit. But we have, if you'll recall, when we put performance measures in place for the new manager that we're hiring, part of that included stabilization fund, having that have an appropriate balance. At that time, I didn't know what, you know, Andy was going to have a comment regarding that or not. But it's something where we do have an ordinance for the stabilization fund, to my knowledge. None of us have, you know, really looked at it in any great depth. It was implemented prior to my time on City Council. So I, having, the stabilization fund is a fund that you have in place for ensuring that your financial health is good. And so it had already kind of been on my mind that we need to readdress this. And so having Andy say that it really didn't make a lot of sense actually kind of helps because it didn't make, not necessarily all those financial policies are, you know, I just think somebody thought they made sense, and so we need to go back to that and figure it out. But we don't really know what the intent was of City Council when that was originally enacted. And so I think the benefit of us getting to address it again is we get to say, whatever the intent was, we get to set it up to be whatever the intent needs. And I think Andy has just confirmed that we need to do that. But it is a financial measurement that is going to be important to our community. And if, you know, heaven forbid, we ever do have something catastrophic happen in our community, a stabilization fund will be there to help us carry through whatever period of time that might be. So I, I'm actually glad it's in the report. It kind of gives us some, or it's in your comment. It gives us some, I guess, some further- It gives us some, I guess, some further justification to go ahead and move that forward. I have, we'll talk about it a little bit on Saturday, but I'm penciling in budget line items for us to move money to stabilization. So we don't have totals figured out or anything like that yet, by the time we talk on Saturday, but.
So a rule of thumb, and again, y'all's stabilization fee, obviously whatever you want it to be. But a rule of thumb, a lot of municipalities will say, okay, we want somewhere between 10% to 30% of our annual revenue, you know, for the general fund. We want 10 or 10 to 30% set aside, whether it's formally designated or just in their budget process. We want that amount set aside kind of as a stabilization amount. And then we would say, okay, here's our total, that, here's our total fund balance. We're then going to pull out this 10 to 30% number. And whatever this, you know, 90 to 60, 70% number, whatever's left, is what you all can budget. So that's generally the way that would work, okay? And it just gets goofy here, because we don't have a positive number to begin with. We're negative, so we don't have anything to pull out. And then on top of that, even if you did have a positive number, I'm not sure that how the ordinance reads is really how the thing's been set up. And so that just needs to be looked at, too. Okay? So you kind of put all that together and just take a look at it.
And regarding the internal controls, without, you know, going from two positions to one position to no positions, we are, we'll have information for you guys to consider also in the budget process as far as adding positions. And of course, Steve starts here a month, or a couple of weeks, and so that'll be one of those positions. But Heather and I have been talking, Heather's done some homework and research, and so we'll have that for you guys to consider, too. Because we need to, we need to do a couple of things. We need to have that internal control expanded. But we also need to reduce our spend with Crawford and Associates. I mean, we're, we're paying for Cadillac to serve as a wheelbarrow. And so we need to, we haven't had a choice this year, but we can fix that moving forward, so.
So, and I mentioned them at the front, but we're two separate firms, but we work quite a bit with them on, on many municipalities. They're very good, but yes, how you all are using them is not how most cities use them. And it is very expensive to use them to that degree. Just any CPA firm to that degree is going to be expensive, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, the role that was filled by Angelica, is that just not the, the role that, when she was filling two roles? Is no one filling either of those roles, or just Crawford is filling one half of it and the other half of that role is going on?
We're, we're filling all the roles.
Okay, just, okay, so is it still an issue where one person's filling both of those designations?
Well, so I mentioned, so there's the business manager and the finance director. Those were the two positions that, I guess, Angelica had. And then when she left, really the mayor, I think maybe the fire chief stepped in to do the quote business manager role and probably some of the, the finance director role, just indirectly, kind of words, one stop and one start. But then also the Crawford, the use of the Crawfords increased to help fill the role of the finance director.
Between Heather and Brian, myself, and Crawfords, we've been, that's where all the work's been.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know how, if we, yeah, how we're fulfilling that role.
So did Joe Don have a finance director under him, Angelica?
So yeah, and I'll just say this, and I'll quit talking, but just, you know, the Crawfords aren't approving things. They're not, that's not their role. They're mostly, you know, bookkeepers, if you will, debits and credits. But they're not approving, they're not necessarily giving advice or, you know, or things like that, which someone here on site would be giving. And so that's really where our comment comes in. The Crawfords can certainly handle the, the accounting piece of it. It's more of the approval piece and, and the, you know, just having someone else here looking at things. And, but the accounting they can do is just expensive, yeah. Okay, so anything else on, on this document here?
I guess, just out of curiosity, because I've never seen this particular wording on them before, but the city, the city is not in compliance with state law. What's the issue with, what happens if you're, because we're not in compliance with it?
Well, I mentioned to the finance committee, we'll see, I mean, I'm just pulling a number, but maybe one out of 10 municipalities that I work with will have this. And I've never seen, and I don't mean to lessen the severity, but I've never seen any consequences from the state auditor's office. I would imagine at some point, if it just got so far out of hand, that you all are going to become insolvent, then maybe they would jump in and do something. But I've never worked with anybody that was ever near that degree. And so they've, I've never heard of any consequences or, or effect or, or anything from them.
Can you clarify?
We are, we said we are compliant now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just, so everybody's perfectly clear. Andy's given us the report on our position as of June 30th, 2022. Everything that's happened from July 1st on is, is fiscal year '23, and it's not relevant to the audit that he just gave us.
All right, 30 seconds more. There is a two-page letter, a required communication letter. There's seven or eight bullet points in here that we are required to communicate with you all. And if there is anything in here beyond just the bullet plate letter or verbiage, I would tell you. But there's nothing in here, so I don't want to take up your time by boring you with this, but there's really nothing there. But I am required to give it to you, so you all have it.
And so Andy mentioned the letters. I thought they were within, I thought they were within this document. I have the letters, I will email them to all of you.
Okay, that's it. So thanks to, I didn't get to thank the finance committee, I rushed out so they could keep talking. But thanks to you all, and then certainly thanks to you all. And I'm heading south, so wish me good luck, that I don't have to go north.
Don't put your sale up.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Andy.
Kelly, did, we voted back when Angelica left in, what, July, oh, June, July or so? We have, didn't we vote for, to split the duties with you and Brian and hire Crawfords until we could get higher? I mean, it's just taken us longer than we anticipated to actually find someone wanting to apply for the job and could do it. So as a council, we voted and approved Crawford, yourself, and Brian, and extra duties to Heather.
I don't remember we voted on Crawford, I just remember.
We didn't vote on Crawford.
Did we not vote on Crawford?
Crawford's expenses were.
Maybe it was just a discussion we had.
Crawford's expenses were in the budget. And so Angelica put those, increased the amount of professional services to account for the fact that she wasn't going to be here and we were going to be leaning on Crawford more.
Well, I know the discussion, but we did vote as a council for the other half of the duties. But I just know we had talked about Crawford and using them to make sure everything was done accordingly and accurately, so.
Yes. One additional point of clarification. So HSPG was recommended to us by Angel Johnson and Blasingame. But we did evaluate three, if you guys have all three different firms, and ultimately decided on HSPG as the best bid, so.
I have a question about page 41. Are those the funds that we were, I know it's going to be the same now, but were those the funds that were being paid back?
I'm sorry, I put my, just to put my.
You said 41?
Yes.
It says that the, the internal transfers?
I believe so.
I was going to say, I'll let Andy explain. I am not an accountant.
I'm sorry, I put this in my bag on this.
The airport fund is completely.
You can have mine if you like.
The, all of the cash for the airport is accounted for in a positive fashion in our pooled cash, their checking account, their CDs, and our savings account that we set aside.
I think we have one final transfer to make.
We're going to make one transaction at the end of this year to, you know, June. The money's all there, transaction, and it's an internal transaction, hasn't occurred.
Okay, but the hotel tax fund, are we still needing to pay that or transfer the money back to that or?
Everything, everything's positive.
Everything?
Yes.
Okay, all of them are paid.
That's the only way we have a positive general fund balance, is for them to all be picked up.
Okay.
Okay, did you get squared away?
I think so.
I'm still trying to catch up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that answered my question.
Okay.
In the, the council finance report, I must have left mine in the other room.
What do you want to work out?
The, if you go to, it's like the cover page, one, two, page three, it's this page. That is all of our cash. And so we have like 10 or 12 funds that are accounted for in pooled cash. And then we have separate cash accounts in the box below that. And then the, I said everything's positive. I guess the homestead retirement is 44 cents negative, so I'm not counting that. But, but then the next page is all of our certificates of deposit. And so I'm going to have Trent. Trent manages with the finance committee, our CDs. And so I'm going to have Trent, he talked, Andy talked about stabilization fund. Some of these CDs were established for stabilization. And so I'm going to have Trent, Trent's got that information to know which CDs are stabilization CDs and which are just, you know, CDs for saving up for future projects, that kind of stuff. But we'll get that clarified. But yeah, the cash, the cash is all back where it should be.
Well, this basically almost kind of, just since our audits are all been so far behind, almost kind of paints a clearer picture, just because it's a nine to 21-month old picture, correct?
Well, and I, I think the delay probably this year was just in the, you know, getting done with the new auditing firm. You know, I won't speak for you, but my assumption is you already had a book of clients that you had scheduled. And we did not, we did not schedule with you until, I mean, I think we signed our letter of engagement in August or September?
It was in the summer.
Yeah, and so, so that put us behind all of the rest of the schedule. We're going to get scheduled more quickly, I think, for this.
This first year's been a challenge for, I mean, we took on a fair amount of work, just me, Chris, and then his group, that we hadn't really planned for. And I think similar to what you all are finding, trying to hire a business manager, it's the same in any profession, anywhere in the country, it seems like. There is just a very small pool of people to get you to come work for us.
Well, I wouldn't kind of blame it, just go back to the pictures, kind of, I mean, we're looking at it now. That's been nine to 21 months old, I think. So when the next time we do an audit, hopefully it'll be a lot quicker, that it's more up to date and everything, so.
I think it's kind of moot on this one, because as old as this is, but I'd like to, the next audit, I'd like to have it like two to three weeks before we actually, you know, go over it, just so we have more time to review it, because it's, you know, pretty lengthy, and then maybe we have more, I'd have more questions on it.
You can continue to review it and ask questions, and we'll.
That's all I've got right now.
Yeah.
This, this for future results.
Part of that may have just been, it's already so late, just get it to you and have this as soon as possible. But yeah, so in the future, it'd be nice to have this more timely and kind of more organized, give y'all time to look at it and still be quicker, all the same.
I'm going to think about the time span between when we get it and when we, you know, get to talking to you.
Yeah, that's what I mean. But it had already gotten so late, this is.
Yeah.
All right. So that concludes item number eight. Next item is discussion and action on the acceptance of the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual audit.
I have a motion to accept the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual audit, as presented.
My second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Veer, to accept, to accept the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual audit. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Fair? Yes. Brooks?
Yes.
Stelly?
Yes.
Stelly?
Thank you.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you, Andy. Good luck heading home. Item 10 is discussion and action on resolution 2023-8, a resolution authorizing participation in the Main Street program and designating the point of contact to submit the application. We have Jeremy Zeller with us, and Jeremy is, what I'm going to say, an expert on the Main Street program. This particular resolution would enable us to participate with Woods County Economic Development, which Jeremy is the director of Woods County Economic Development. My understanding, there'd be no cost to the city of Alba and no long-term obligation. So Jeremy, tell us all about it.
Okay, well, first of all, my previous position was with the Department of Commerce, and I was the business consultant for the Oklahoma Main Street program. And so I, I'm aware of all the great benefits that come with it. So some of the things I wanted to point out, first of all, a lot of people, when they hear Main Street program, they don't really understand what that means. It really focuses on your downtown and the revitalization aspect of that downtown. They go through four points, that is organization, promotion, economic development, and design. So some of the things that what we would be looking at, we would be entering at the network level. This is a, a level where you don't have to pay dues the first year. It's, in fact, the state level pays for your membership to the national level, the very first year. You don't have to have anyone who's a salary employee. This basically gives us opportunity at the resources that they have, the public relations opportunity. Things that we do get at that level is their resource library, not just state, but national. We get the public, the recognition, the social media, the, just basically saying that Alba's a part of this program. The tools, some of those tools involve data and statistics that normally you'd have to pay anywhere up to thousands of dollars for. We get those for free. Other things you get, windshield surveys, which is where they can come in and do a review of the town and kind of tell you what the positives and the negatives are. Other things that we would be working with the State Historic Preservation Office. So it's a good partner to have in regards to the preservation of the downtown and the, the buildings themselves. List of manufacturers, that's a great resource. So this whole library that you have, you also have a listserv of all of these communities that are Main Street programs. So if you're needing somebody in regards of lighting or benches, streetscape, you get just a plethora of people out there that can help and tell you who's good, who's not good. If you have any sort of projects that you're looking towards, not just downtown, but just overall community-wise, too. Other things I wanted to point out, where there's just grant opportunities that will be there. There's also just guides in regards of building rehab, the proper way to do a rehab of your building. If it's a old historic building, what you'd want to do there. That's basically kind of the gist of what it is. It is just a year-to-year basis, so the first year, it is free. If you decide that you want to, the next year to do it, it is a $295 membership fee that you have to maintain with the national Main Street program itself. And again, their library's great, their listserv also. For the Oklahoma programs, there's 42. For the national, there's 1,600. So you can pretty much almost find anybody that's comparable to you at the national level. And in the Oklahoma level, it's scattered throughout the whole state. Any questions?
Is this similar to what Cherokee does?
Yes.
It's like they do a lot of good things in Cherokee with that.
Actually, was there a liaison? And Sean is a good friend of mine. She's a resource that, you know, we, we contact each other often, which is just a great thing that you can have. But more at the level that what, what they get are really just a lot of things I don't have access to at this point in time. And neither does Jody. Jody, actually, when we were talking about it, it's a fantastic opportunity for the chamber itself to also get those, those reasons. it's a fantastic opportunity for the chamber itself to also get those, those resources. Everything from, I mean, you can get templates, uh, for marketing, uh, material, business plan, opportunities, uh, just really a lot of great stuff.
So like they've gotten bigger every year of things and events that they host in Cherokee, so.
Yes.
With their Main Street program.
Now, is it similar, like, there's probably quite a few years there used to be a Main Street program. And I think the only thing I can kind of remember about it is some of the businesses, there, there were sign requirements that it had to be like so big or this or that. It is, this isn't the same thing.
So now Alba was in the Main Street program thirty-seven years ago. And so obviously a lot has changed since then. But what they do have is, um, just kind of, uh, uh, suggestions of, of, of things that you can do and, and, you know, directions you want to go. There's nothing that's in the program that's like a mandatory situation. But let's say somebody wants to do a rehab on a building and, uh, they're looking to bring that historic preservation part of it, um, they have opportunities through the state historic, uh, preservation office for tax credits and be able to get funding that way. There's going to be requirements through them and they will say that you can do this, you can't do that. But of course, um, if they say, you know, thank you, but no thank you, they can do whatever they want with their building. But there's a lot of great guidelines that are there, but if you're going for the tax credits, then, um, SHIPO is what the state historic, historic preservation office is called. So often you'll hear that term, SHIPO. Um, but SHIPO will have a lot of requirements in order to get that tax incentives.
Right, if you start, you decide to go that direction, then you're.
Right.
You're going to jump those hoops, and like you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Will you kind of go into the levels? It looks like we're participating for free, but are there higher categories than the network level that we're participating?
Yeah, so, um, the level, the network level was actually designed for a lot of those communities that doesn't have the support there. What's great for Alba, you can get in at the network level. And then if you say, you know what, I think this is, uh, something that's benefited us this previous, or this, this year, um, let's look at moving to the next level, they have an associate level. That is a little more in guideline, a two-year process to get you to their designated level. Once you get designated, you get a little bit more perks such as, um, access to an architect for free. Um, you get, uh, the opportunity to do their awards program. So you get, uh, you know, opportunities to have businesses and, and rehab, uh, projects, get that more exposure, the, the PR part of it, I like to say. Uh, one thing that I like about this network level, uh, because when you do move up, you do have to have a full-time, uh, director hired. Now there are opportunities where you can sometimes have somebody wearing two hats, I don't suggest that. Um, in some smaller communities, they'll have, you know, like a chamber or their ED person also be the director for the Main Street program too. Um, but it really is a full-time position, um, for that particular, um, when you go Main Street itself. Uh, that designated level though, does bring a lot more. The network level, I think the part that's just great about that is the resources and the PR that you get. I mean, once, um, accepted into the program, the state, the Department of Commerce will announce that, you know, uh, Alba has been, um, accepted in, in the network level. Then the next thing that they'll do is they'll have, uh, like, you know, Facebook opportunities, you know, where it's like kind of a spotlight that they'll do. Um, that's great, but also just, you know, I think you were talking about lighting or talking about streetscape sidewalk. Um, so the point of contact would probably, it would be myself and somebody can come to me and say, uh, hey, can you ask about the best way to go for this situation we ran into for sidewalk or this particular situation? Uh, what happens when you do this to a building? And we have that opportunity to get it from the experts and they can respond back to us. So it really, the first year, um, of it, being free, I don't see any real risk or anything. The only thing is if you so decide to, and it is a yearly annual contract that they do, it's $295 every year. Um, and that is to maintain that national level that you have. Um, so their general, um, their, their annual fee is that $295.
I just didn't know, as the program moves forward, what did we want to set? And what requirements do we have to need to move up in the program, especially if we see growth and stuff like that? Because it sounds like it's a good program. So I didn't know what, who, what goals we can set now to say, how do we say that this program has grown and is deserving to put effort into that next level.
Yeah, and what's great is that, that state staff is there to also say, okay, so you're at the network level, you want to go to associate, here are some things to be looking for this year. This is what you want to do, um, if you want to stay in the network level for another year to kind of build upon that. So you have that opportunity to, you know, increase yourself. Alba is a program or is a city and community that could be designated. Uh, I've seen a lot, um, someone like Winoka and Freedom, I would like to get in that network level as well. Do not see them moving up, um, that network level's going to be great for them.
What's the cost to go that next level associate?
So the associate level would be, um, you have to have at least a part-time position. Uh, generally salary between that is an eighteen to twenty-five thousand. Um, so that would be one thing you'd be looking at, it would be at least a half-time, part-time to full-time position. If you were to go up to that next level, the highest level to designate it, that would be a full-time position. Then you're looking at a salary range that averages between forty to fifty thousand. Um, but, uh, you can stay at the network level as long as you want to and just, you know, take advantage of the resources that are available.
Right, right.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2023-8.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Stelling to approve resolution 2023-8, resolution authorizing participation in the Main Street program and designating the point of contact. Or you just approved a resolution, so we're going to have to come back for that.
Apologize, I stopped reading fast.
So, um, any further discussion on approving the resolution? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the, the, the contact that we're choosing, what, uh, staff member, board member, and the mayor? I mean, does it matter?
It really doesn't matter if you want, um, what my thought was, I would need a point of contact. And as far as myself, uh, for Woods County doing Winoka and Freedom, I'm happy to be that contact. So if you came to me and said, we need this, I can be that point of contact. Or you can just choose to have one of your own, it's really up to you. I would suggest someone, um, that does have, um, in particular for Alba, someone that liked Jody with the chamber, that would be a perfect, uh, point of contact, uh, for you to have in, in regards to this. Because, um, a lot of the chambers in all the communities work close with the Main Street program. It really is, uh, the two go hand in hand.
Thoughts, guys? Jody, you kind of volunteered, Jim.
Yeah.
Jody and I have talked about this prior to.
So you're, you're good with that? Then all motion to designate Jody as the point of contact to submit the application.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to designate Jody Stevenson as the point of contact to submit our application for the Main Street program. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Well, thank you both. Next item, eleven, discussion and action regarding Freedom West Community Development Corporation 501(c)(3), request for permit fee waivers from the city of Alba for the construction of a single-family affordable home located at 121 East Center Street in Alba in an amount not to exceed $455.55. Um, Dr. Decker's here with us and, and in your packet, you got the letter requesting this, um, uh, fee waiver. Um, this is the third time which Freedom West has come for a construction of affordable housing. Um, and each time, um, the, the council has chosen to waive the fees on the permits. Not waive the permits, they still have to have the permits, but just waive the fees on it. And Dr. Decker, would you like to explain?
It's been a while since we built a new home in Alba. Um, we have seven units in Alba that we operate as well as, uh, units in other communities. In Alba, we have zero vacancy, if the need is there. And this particular location is an empty lot in a residential area that, um, a home was on years ago. So, um, I've got some lot cleanup to do, tree needs to be taken down and some concrete slabs need to be taken up, but, um, it would be nice to have a home there. So three-bedroom, two-bath, twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet, um, energy efficient. Nice for a family of one to five people, so.
Um, this, uh, this kind of support, you know, with the, it's not a lot of money, but it is something that when, uh, Freedom West goes to seek other support, it's something that they are able to, to use to, to show that their program is supported and, and so it's. That's what's in it. Anybody, any questions?
When do you expect to break ground? How's that started?
No. I anticipate late summer.
Okay.
If it's, if funding is secured, um, the way the rollout goes in my, my scope of work, it's late summer to, um, be twelve, twelve or twenty-four. So we don't take that long, but I don't like to, to cut it short. I, I'd rather come in under the wire than go.
Need extensions.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Within walking distance of a grade school in downtown, so it's in a good location.
Is, is the home rented, sold?
Yeah, they are owned by Freedom West and then they are rented to households with eighty percent, no more than eighty percent of area median household income, which takes in about eighty percent of Alba. It, it takes care of a lot of, a lot of folks.
Income based rent?
No.
No?
It's affordable, but it's not based on their income. Our rents are generally about twenty-five percent to fifty percent less than market rate on the affordables. So we have, we have a lot of retirees, um, new families, you know, families with new, new babies, yeah.
And the monthly rent revenue goes back into.
Freedom West.
Freedom West to do additional projects such as this?
For operations.
For operations.
Yeah, insurance, maintenance, management.
Okay, since it's a rental, you still have all that upkeep?
Uh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Right now, I think we're the only affordable housing provider in Northwest Oklahoma, with the exception of the, um, apartment complexes that were built, you know, that's not including, uh, Enid. But with the exception, apartment complexes built with our D-money back in the seventies. So we're kind of it and we're doing everything we can do. Most of the support for affordable housing goes to the major metros in Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Lawton.
I would make a motion, um, to, uh, for, uh, permit fee waivers from the city of Alba to Freedom West Community Development Corporation 501(c)(3) for the construction of a single-family affordable home located at 121 East Center Street of Oklahoma in an amount not to exceed $455.55.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the fee waivers for Freedom West to build affordable, single-family affordable housing at 121 East Center Street in Alba, not exceed $455.55. Is there any further discussion?
Can we waive these fees for anybody else? I mean, can, if I want to have my fees waived, I mean, for a permit, can I just get them waived too? Or, but I mean, how do we bring it, how does, what's the process?
The, the process is such that the community, I mean, when we make decisions like this, it's whether or not we believe the community benefit justifies us helping them with the.
And we're not profit.
And they're nonprofit then. Um, so I mean, could we, I mean.
I don't think we could for an individual, you could, I don't, I don't believe so. I'd have to look at the statute for sure, but I don't believe so. I think it'd be not for, nonprofit is a big part of the component of that.
And, well, and we're sitting on the city council at the moment, we, if it's our business, we can't correct.
I know that there's others, I mean.
No, like, yeah, other people.
Yeah.
That could come, but I just didn't know that was part of that as well.
I just think we should be consistent. I don't really like permit fees, period. I don't think anybody should have to pay them, but I think if we're going to have them, I think we should be consistent across the board or just eliminate them altogether.
I mean, that, those are things that we can talk about. I, I mean, I'd go with, as far as Drew, his recommendation, whether or not we should or shouldn't do it, or whether or we can or can't do it. It's your, y'all's, y'all's vote, I think it's good for the community. They've built three houses in Alba and.
We've substantially rehabilitated five and built two new ones, this will be the third anyway.
Well, I'm glad, I mean, I'm glad that you're, you know, they're building something, but I might think it's just being consistent with everybody. So, you know, I'm happy to see anybody that could do any construction here, period.
I'm telling you, if somebody else in the future needed that request, did they just reach out to the, you to get it added as a city agenda item or is there a national application? I know we have like the, like economic development, uh, uh, requests and grants that we can do for citizens, for businesses with historical value.
I'm only familiar with this, this is the only, uh, nonprofit, Freedom West, is the only one that's brought this forward since I've been mayor.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, and they just, they brought it to you, okay.
We've been doing this since Steve Brown was city manager, actually Steve Tomberman. Um, and so we've been at this for twenty-two years.
Yeah, that's right. I just didn't know somebody else wanted to. Manicure success, how they do that.
I would assume that if it's another legal entity, whatever it be, whether it be another governmental entity or nonprofit, I would assume it's the same process.
All right, which is just reaching out to a city council member to have an agenda item added?
I always go to the name.
Okay.
Or city manager, whoever's.
Yeah, who's ever, okay, that's what I just figured, all right.
All right, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Stelling?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Decker.
Item thirteen, we already did twelve. Discussion and action to approve the master equipment lease purchase agreement, including all exhibits and schedules heretofore currently in existence or hereafter executed. Parentheses, the agreement dated as of March twentieth, twenty twenty-three and entered into between NBC Oklahoma, sixty-three oh one Northwestern Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, seven three one one eight, and the city of Alba, Oklahoma, with an annual payment amount of one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and nineteen cents for a 2022 E1 custom rescue pumper fire truck with VIN number four EN six AH A eight nine P two zero zero five seven zero seven. So January thirtieth, we, um, approved to pursue a lease purchase agreement for the fire truck that Chief Miller presented to us. February twenty-first, we approved a budget amendment that would allow the same. And this is the agreement. It's been reviewed by our legal counsel, it's been reviewed by Crawford to ensure that it doesn't obligate us, um, beyond, um, any fiscal year. So it's in compliance with everything that you've got.
Yeah, pretty standard lease agreement.
So this is it. So this is it. I've made it three times now. What questions do we have?
I'd make a motion to approve the master equipment lease purchase agreement as stated in the agenda.
We've got a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the master equipment lease purchase agreement with NBC Oklahoma with an annual payment of $101,450.19 for the pumper fire truck, all as stated on item 13 of this agenda. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question about the payment schedule. Correctly, you know, wrong, but looking through the, the first year's interest we would be paying would be $26,000. Is that what this is saying? On page, what else on the payment schedule towards the end?
Probably.
And it looks to me like.
That's what it says.
We'd be paying a total of $110,000 in interest, bringing that up to $710,000. That just seems like a lot of interest.
You have read it correctly.
Did we go out to, I guess we went out to the other banks too to see what kind of interest rates we can get?
Yes, we did. And that was also discussed, oh, you might not have been at that. That might have been the meeting you were absent. But those interest rates were discussed, yes.
And if they sell the, the other pumper and they throw that on there, that should reduce some of the interest as well, correct? Since they'll be doing like a big principal payment?
If we decided to use the funds from, right now, we're, right now, we're approving one year at a time with that payment amount.
But those funds from the sale are not locked into this.
They're not. They can be, I mean.
I think they're on the, yeah, that's not on yours.
Because we haven't sold it.
Yeah. But we're guaranteed $200,000 for it, right?
Yep. It is out for sealed bids right now.
That's just an awful lot of interest.
I think, well, I don't want to speak on behalf of any financial industry. Any other questions? Does, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Lar?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Bear?
Yes.
All right. Next item, 14, discussion and action to appoint, or on the appointment of city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. Last year, or most, most recently, we had a change during the middle of negotiations, but most recently that was Mr. Dowling and Mr. Stelling. You guys let me know what you want to do.
I'd make a motion to appoint Councilman Bear and Councilman Bowman to be our council representatives.
Who'd you say?
Councilman Bear and Councilman Bowman.
Second.
Hold on.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Stelling and a second from Mr. Winters to appoint Sadie Beer and Greg Bowman as city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the 2023, 2024 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. Any further discussion?
Have we had a city manager negotiate before?
City manager doesn't use, I mean, the city manager has typically been present and the council members. It's just typically because of the, the work that's involved in preparing documents is where the city manager has been involved. But it, I've never served on that committee. Last year was my first taste of it with, you know, not having a city manager, so I.
Early on when, I mean, I've done it for seven, eight years. Usually we'd visit with, visit with Joe Dawn and then we'd go in and take what we were saying and what they were, you know, what they were asking for, and then we'd go back and visit with the manager and stuff. So usually the manager didn't sit in. It was kind of been set up as in, in the media area to where there wasn't quite that maybe friction and stuff and everything to where.
And I think in the past, they, they've hired before consultants who did the job, but I didn't think that was anybody's.
Haven't done it since I've been mayor.
Yeah, that's why I think it was, they found a guy who was.
I think they stopped down that a few years before I got on city council. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
We don't have a second yet.
Stelling?
I had.
Winters?
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. I told Jess.
Yes.
I missed that, sorry.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Uh, next item, uh, number 15 is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307B7 to discuss an open records request for disclosure of information considered during the hiring of the city of Alva business manager.
Motion to enter executive session.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling to enter into executive session. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
All right, well, as the council members, clerk, and legal counsel to remain, take the statute. Would anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is that good enough for you, Drew?
That would.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to disclose Stephen Ford's resume with statutory, statutorily defined confidential information redacted. Is there any further discussion? Call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right, under new business, um, this may, I don't know how long this will take, but I don't think we've got anything that we can take action on, except that over the weekend, we, there was the escape inmate and our city of Alva notification system is limited to just the siren. I sent you guys an email. I don't know if you guys got it before the council meeting. I didn't print it to bring it in here. I can pull it up on my phone. But Chief Miller kind of explained that there was a human error in the siren that was chosen. The, the severe weather or tornado siren was chosen, uh, which is a solid, um.
Tone?
Tone. And then the escaped inmate should have been three short blast instead. And so, um, I'm, I'm, I don't really think our agenda, our new business is related to the, the human error that occurred there as much as it, uh, this kind of brought to light that we haven't had a emergency notification system with the city for a while now. I'm not sure, I, I can't, can't tell you when that system stopped being used by the city of Alva. We used to have a system called Blackboard and I, I knew that it had stopped, but I, I don't know when it had stopped and I.
Two to three years ago.
I'll say it's been a few years.
My assumption is it was financially driven.
Well, we were supposed to be with Woods County.
And we do have, I talked with Ethan prior to this evening. And they are, I guess, if there's any, if there's any action to take, I think it's just general action because he says they can bring us on and set us up as a customer in their system. And so is that what you guys would like me to do?
Like text message, like the text message service, the phone calls?
Yep.
I mean, I think we need.
Cost?
Zero.
I can help out a little bit because I can remember a couple of years ago or something similar. There was that discussion in the Blackboard, but it isn't that much. And at the time, there was a discussion with the county commissioners that they have to, or they do pay a fee that covers basically the whole county. And so I actually went over and visited Ethan, tried to figure out the way to try to, where, to blend ourselves together. And basically, we could use that service because basically, I believe the schools can partner in on it, but basically, we don't have to pay a fee to, to do that. So we basically just share with the county and they pay that fee to do that, and they have to pay that. So it would basically cost us nothing. We're, for we play Blackboard a bunch, but it just been ball dropped or something to where it's never been just totally initiated.
I'm pretty sure there was even a, a vote, I believe, to do that in the past.
Uh, I think there was discussion, but it was not a vote because I thought I talked to Heather here a little back and there was, I don't even remember talking about paying the membership again.
They're getting ready to change systems, but he said either system they go with, they'll be able to set us up as a customer within the system. I don't know, um, he wasn't certain. If we have to, if we want to have our own licensed user, there might be a license fee. But the system itself is free for us to use and he can set us up as a customer in there. And we can set up as, you know, many, um, sub-customers as we want. So if we want a group that's just about severe weather and that's what they subscribe to, severe weather events, if we want a group that's regarding utility outages, we can set up groups that way. Um, so.
I don't believe we have the ability to send out personal messages through that as well.
And, uh, yes, and the other thing he did mention is that whatever system they, they go with, when somebody, caller ID, I got a missed phone call from this number, it's going to go out from a separate number that just has the recording of the, um, emergency announcement. That way it's not tying up. Because every time, Heather, I don't know if you remember, but whenever we'd send those out and somebody missed a call, they're calling city hall to find out what happened.
Yeah.
And so now all of a sudden, the, the two and a half, three people that we've got down here, all they're doing is answering phone calls to, to say what the recording message said.
Well, some of the discussion too was back, when you go to Blackboard, uh, because I remember going in to sign it up. You could sign up with your phone numbers, but basically we'd have to read, everybody would have to go back in and basically, uh, sign up to accept those messages. I think what we were looking at the time to where.
So what they would get, you know, whether it was, you know, it was stormed or this or that and put it out,
what number they'd get it at and stuff like that, I believe.
We can, they can either, we can either decide to have people individually opt in or we can take our utility database and opt everybody in.
I would probably give them the option to opt in because if they don't want to know, they don't want their phone.
I guess what I'm saying is we can use our utility database to notify everybody that they have an opportunity to opt in.
I, I would say you print it and do this on a utility bill, but is this, is this an item that we need to take action on? Is this an actionable item we can take action on? Or does it need to wait till next month?
I, it's kind of like the fire truck, you know, we, you guys took action to say, do that, and then you took action to amend the budget and then you took action to approve a lease, so.
Well, basically we have nothing now and the service is available. I mean, so it's really doubled.
Take action to get with Woods County management and start the process.
And that's my question is, is this an item that is actionable that we could take action on legally?
I mean, it's under new business.
And then my next question would be, is this an item that we need to take action on?
So I think the, no, you don't have to take action. I got directions.
We just, I mean, there's no, probably no cost to us, but it's, I mean, it's negligible if it is. But, I mean, we're just participating in that because like, back then, I mean, we paid for the one service and hardly ever used it. That's what I think.
So maybe for just to make this easy. Back to work. I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to direct, um, the mayor to.
Can you, or manager?
Or his designate.
Thank you.
To work with Woods County Emergency Management to institute an emergency management system.
I second.
Is that, emergency management notification system? I was trying to think of the right word here, so, emergency management notification system.
Uh, I got it.
You got it? Okay, I second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Beer to direct the mayor or designate, or the mayor's designate to work with Woods County to implement an emergency notification system for the city of Alva. Is that right?
Yep.
All right, any further discussion?
Now, this will stay the same though.
Unless we choose to take separate action, that has nothing to do with this motion. So we can, we can talk about, probably, that probably doesn't meet the requirement for new business.
Uh, it'd be, yeah, need to visit with Ethan about that for anything like that.
Call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. That's it. Oh, no, it's not. I had to make, is there any, I don't think there's anything else that could be considered new business right now? All right, um, item 18, remarks and inquiries by council members.
Are we gonna have like possibly a brief to city manager at some point in time? And since there's been, you know, been people calling in, asking questions or something like that, maybe we don't know how.
How about day one?
I'll put the welcome committee on it. All right, any other comments from the council members? All right, city council meeting is adjourned and we will call to order the regular Alva Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lar?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on a consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the special meeting held December 6, 2022. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 21, 2023. And approval of claims in the amount of $196,138.38 and payroll expenses of $50,303.19.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
And a motion from Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action to seek bids for the Homestead Pond Installation Project to include local ad to be circulated. This is from Mr. Dowling and Mr. Brooks.
I just wanted to take the time to get it as an agenda item. I know that the budget meeting is coming up and it is something to consider. I think we've had talk from people at the Homestead and other indicates that indicated that it was, it's all on the ground now in what it compared to, and it does make the Homestead look better and stuff like that. I didn't, I know from the project that we. that. I didn't, I know from the project that we've kind of lost the person that we had to arrange to install it, that we do have liner. I just didn't know, do you, do we have a kind of a vision set and a budget for what we were going to pay the guy? I bet it's gone up since then, since that was several years ago, or a year ago at least. I didn't know kind of where we were at with that and where we could start to help you gain traction with that.
We never had really. We just say to install it, we just knew that we had a liner available.
Nope. We did have contractor that was going to install it and, and they are not going to install it now. So that's.
I know, there, I mean, there had been talk last fall about.
It doesn't.
I know some volunteers that would be willing to do it, but.
So what we can do, and it, I mean, we can advertise it in the paper. I mean, we've made phone calls. But we can advertise it in the paper and see what we get.
All right, that's all I did.
It does not require publication because it's gonna, it's not going to be $100,000. But we can advertise it and see what we get.
Do we know what roughly that cost was?
It was, I, I'd just.
You'd be pulling the number and making it up?
Yeah, I, it wasn't even, I mean, it wasn't even enough to consider to have council approval.
Okay.
I mean, it was less than 20, I know it was less than 25, and I want to say it was going to be less than probably five or 10. Dirtwork's already been done. Or if they had to be redone.
Probably.
It's done.
I mean, but not.
Yeah, yeah, not, not tremendous amount.
And we already have the liner.
Yeah.
So.
I think it, I mean, unless, I mean, I could put something off a bid where there's not guidelines.
I don't say, it's not engineered.
I mean, but as far as.
Just a project that we had.
Yeah, it's not spec, it's not engineered, it's.
But just see who's interested in helping us out and getting it, the project done because, I mean, I know they would like to have it done. So.
I'd like to have it done.
Yeah. So maybe a local contractor that'll have a free weekend or something will put in his name and her name and go get it done.
So you want bids or proposals?
I, I would think proposals would be the best wording since it's not really a bid, right?
Well, if they're gonna, if we're gonna consider, anytime we consider bids, the dollar they put down should be for apples to apples. And if we don't have specs.
Yeah.
That's what I'm afraid of. And it's, and we need to have some consideration on how experienced somebody is just to go out there, if they run the liner.
Well, somebody's.
And it's going to cost way much more to get a new liner yet.
Yeah.
Well, and just because of what the contractor that we had contracted with was trying to do, and I, this was part of the issue, they wanted to put in concrete beaver slides and, you know, bury, you know, six inch pipe to, you know, for runoff to go, you know, directly into the pond and that kind of thing. And I, it wasn't just me, I mean, previous administration including myself, were like, that's not in our budget. We want to put the liner in and, and when it rains in Northwest Oklahoma.
And how it functional again.
We'll fill it up.
It needs to be landscaped around the outer, outer perimeter, but not, like I said, you put in like grain stuff, you're just asking for issues or something down the road and stuff.
So I think if we put it in instead of the bid, but just proposal, we might get landscaping because there was talk about a sidewalk, you know, around the whole edge of that thing. And it could get, I mean, we can get proposals and see what people come back to us with. You may end up with that. But I think a bid might be all over the place trying to decide that the lowest bid is the best bid.
The simplified version would be just put the liner in, you're gonna have to landscape somewhat around the outer edge of the liner. Electricity's probably already there from previous. And so it's just, you know, be electrician running or the wire running and have to order a pump. They're like, so, I mean, that'd be a simplified version. And then the rest of there, it'd be, you know, as far as sidewalks or this or that. And then that could get, you know, that could be secondary.
Okay. So we're, are we wanting to, are we wanting to tailor the proposal or are we wanting to, all proposals welcome?
I think somebody needs to look at it and decide what to, I mean, to put out there for a proposal bid.
I'd be happy if there was a liner in it and nothing else. I mean, I'd be happy if there was more to it, but at the end of the day.
Yeah, I mean, this, like I said, just like simple burden. I mean, because you can throw a fountain in there real easy.
We want proposals to install the liner. Right? That's all. That's what we want.
Yeah.
But you gotta have, you don't want it just sitting in there without water in it.
We've got it, we've got a fountain.
Well, I know, but.
It just needs the liner and then filled with water. Well, I mean, filling the water, I don't think that's going to be the contractor who ever does the job necessarily be the person to fill it. It would have to be.
Well, we get in the fountain and that, I mean, we've got a, we've got a pump fountain already. It still works. It worked when we took it out.
So we'll need to get it, the liner and get it.
We saw the liner and installed the pump. That's what we're looking for, right?
I can install the pump.
So we just need a liner installed.
Yeah.
It might be.
The pump you plug in and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can fill it up with a water hose and get it filled and then hope it rains and we don't have to keep refilling it. But if not, you just refill it.
Well, and if, I don't know if everybody remembers, but it was, evaporation wasn't the entire problem out there. The liner was damaged and so it was leaking. So.
I mean, my concern is like that, I install liner, but that outer edge has to be, that's the biggest portion, installing it properly to where you don't get.
Stuff up.
Rain and stuff and it washes underneath it. But that, where you tuck in that upper edge, that's the, that's the biggest portion to be doing it right.
But you also have to put something underneath the liner on the base.
Well, that's what, the hole needs to be shaped up and then put in a fine sand and everything to where it can lay on it where, once the water, water goes in there, it doesn't force a hole in it by a small rock or dirt clod or something like that.
They can run a tiller down there. It's not, that liner's pretty thick.
Yeah, but you get a water weight against it and it'll.
Should we, should we, do we need, do we need to table this and get clarification on what needs to happen before we can see proposal?
I'd rather see clarification as far as what.
So it's done properly. I'd just certainly do it done. I'd get a proposal to install the liner. The rest of it can be done by somebody else. I mean, if their proposal doesn't include doing it properly, I mean, they just don't accept a proposal.
Because in their proposal, they really should state how they're going to do it with the sand and.
Yeah, we just might add.
They shouldn't know how to do it.
What we have, you know, which sounds like the liner.
So I make the motion to seek proposals to install the liner at the homestead, the pond liner at the homestead.
I'll second.
What was it?
Okay.
He'll repeat it.
Does it, who hears you? I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Dr. Lahr to seek proposals for the Homestead Pond Liner Installation. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. Next item, number six and seven, I'll just tell you, these are the same, these are regarding the same ODOT construction project. But six is discussion and action to approve the short form of agreement between the City of Alva and Myers Engineering Consulting Engineers, Inc. for sewer main relocation, US 281 JP 32807 Woods County. We've met with the ODOT engineers already, code enforcement, water department, Chief Miller, Myers Engineering. And basically, they're going to do storm drainage and sidewalks on 281 South from College Intersection. So, and they're, and goes all the way out to the airport close by. But anyway, where they're doing that, they're going to be, they're gonna be in arreasement dealing with our water and sewer lines. And so when ODOT does that, they have to pay to have that relocated or dug deeper or whatever. Anyway, this item approves a contract with Myers Engineering for that service. And so the engineering's going to be paid for by ODOT, the construction's going to be paid by ODOT, and the materials are all going to be paid by ODOT. This just authorizes Myers to work as the engineer on the project.
I'd make a motion to approve the short form agreement between the City of Alva and Myers Engineering for sewer main relocation as stated.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the agreement between City of Alva and Myers Engineering for sewer main relocation for, along US 281 as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item seven is the same, except it's for water main relocation.
I'd make a motion to approve short form agreement between the City of Alva and Myers Engineering for water main relocation as stated in the agenda.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Dr. Lahr to approve the short form agreement for City of Alva and Myers Engineer for Water Main Relocation along US 281 as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item makes new business. We don't have anything qualifies as new business. Item nine is to adjourn. So we will adjourn the Utility Authority Meeting and open health order of the Economic Development Authority Meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Yes.
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 21, 2023. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $27,110.84 in payroll expenses of $16,299.61. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda, second.
And a motion from Mr. Stelling, the second from Mr. Bowman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
And no new business. We are adjourned.